I'd like to call to order the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, July 30th, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We lost a nine-year-old member of the Bhutanese community at Hershey Park last week. We'll have an extended moment of silence today in her honor.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, evergreen, justice for all.
We'll now move into public participation on agenda items only. So we have, I think, forty-nine agenda items before us today. If there's any public participation on those items, it'll be a three-minute cap. And you'll need to, oh, by the way, we are live streaming, just so everyone's aware. Three-minute cap, and you'll need to state your name prior to sharing. Anyone for public comment on agenda items?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
While there are many things on today's agenda that I could comment on-
Excuse me, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. I'm going to direct my three minutes to just number twenty-three, selection of Dauphin County prison healthcare provider. In the past year and a half, we've seemed to come to an end to the no-bid, auto-renew, back-room dealing contract era in Dauphin County. And this seemed especially true with contracts at Dauphin County prison. And the refrain I've heard over and over again from you up there on the dais is RFP everything. And it seemed like that was happening, especially true at the prison. And we had a number of RFPs and RFIs. There were presentations by potential providers at prison board meetings, at commissioners' meetings. And while not everyone ultimately liked the individual providers that were chosen, the process was transparent. And we appreciated that the public could hear and see the different providers and the different things that they brought to the table. And now we come to the biggest and perhaps the most important decision, especially to the more than seven hundred residents of Dauphin County prison. It's been decades since the county has considered any medical provider other than Prime Care. And I'll not take up my time talking about the numbers. Those are well documented and are greater than the twenty-two people who have died in custody since 2022. And then we come to the single line on today's agenda, selection of Dauphin County prison healthcare services provider. And suddenly, all the transparency has disappeared. That was evidence at the June prison board meeting, when a few members of the board made recommendations to keep Prime Care or WellPath, whose lobbyist is the son-in-law of the sitting judge. Those recommendations were not accepted by the commissioners. So again, we were hoping, wow, there's really going to be some transparency here. The process is going to emerge. And it appeared that the public might actually learn about the companies vying for this contract, either from their own presentations or a brief summary provided to the public, perhaps on the website, or at the very least, an explanation of the rubric or the scoring process. And I was really hopeful, Commissioner Hartwick, because you talked about meeting with all these people. And there are people here today who will or have advocated for a particular provider. But the process is nearly as important as the product or the outcome. And where is the process? We owe this to the people who have been incarcerated at DCP since Prime Care's first day on the job. But that seems to have evaporated. We are left with this single line on today's agenda. May those who died in custody at DCP on medical issues on Prime Care's watch rest in peace, and may their memory be a blessing.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation on agenda items? State your name again, just to... Dr. Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kamika, and I live in Shypoke. I'm here as a Dauphin County resident who cares deeply about the lives of everyone in our community, including those held at Dauphin County prison. Today, you have a choice, not just between companies, but between continuing harm and choosing healing, between the legacy of lawsuits, neglect, and death, or a fresh start with a provider committed to transparency and care. It has been said that the decision before you today is one about making an independent choice as a commissioner. But with respect, this is not a moment for independence or individualism. Because individualism can cause us to overlook the very real impact these decisions have on real people and real lives. Right now is a moment for rectification, accountability, and rebuilding public trust. It's a moment to lend your ear to the people who elected you and even those who didn't. It's about listening to the voices that have shown up, spoken out, and demanded better, not just on behalf of ourselves, but on behalf of our fellow residents and those held at DCP. There is only one provider without bankruptcies, scandals, or political ties to this county, and that provider is Medico. Our group has done the research, even without full transparency into the proposals. That clean record isn't just a detail. It's an opportunity to reset the standard of care at Dauphin County prison. I urge you to make a decision that helps and not harms. Vote for a provider that will serve the people of Dauphin County prison and of this community with care and respect. Our community and your conscience deserve a chance at quality, accountability, and a fresh start. Not let this vote not just be a turning point, not just for policy, but for the humanity that we choose to honor here in Dauphin County, for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We'll go for all three together for approval today, seeing as the controller isn't here today.
I'll make the motion.
Motion for July 9th, July 16th, and July 16th Salary Board. Motion made by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Haggerty.
On Tuesday, July 29th, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding personnel matters, purchase or lease of real property, and contract negotiations.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to directors and guests. I'm going to hand the mic over to Commissioner Priest as he is oversight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time it is my privilege to announce that we are celebrating, acknowledging National Pre-Trial Probation and Parole Supervision Week. And we have some individuals here I'd like to call up. I could sit at the desk at the same time. We have to pull up a couple of extra chairs. But we have with us Sally McQuinn Barry, who's the Director of Adult Probation. We have Shannon Bibb, the Director of Pre-Trial Services. And from Juvenile Probation, we have Nicole Matern and Chris Hagel. They would come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of the board and our two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand residents, we want to thank you for the great work that you and your teams do 24/7, 365. On behalf of the residents of Dauphin County, your work does not go unnoticed. And we want to take this opportunity to have you here today to tell us a little bit about what each of your areas do and the expertise that's provided to the residents of Dauphin County. And you can start in any order. Just state your name first.
Good morning. I'm Sally Barry. I'm the Director for Adult Probation for the county. I have here with me also today Andy Cooper, who is one of our two deputy directors with the department. I want to express our appreciation for the invitation to be here today to recognize our probation officers and all of the staff that support the adult probation department and the services that we provide to the community. I'd like to take just a few moments to shine a light on a group of individuals who often do their work quietly behind the scenes, but whose impact on our community is both powerful and lasting, our probation officers and the administrative support staff. Our probation officers are responsible to wear many hats. They are protectors of public safety. They are mentors to those that are navigating difficult paths. And they're expected to be problem solvers in some of the most complex human situations. Each day, they are expected to walk the line between accountability and compassion, between structure and support. And they're asked to do this with a high level of professionalism, dedication, and heart. This is something that does truly deserve our recognition. We know that this job isn't easy. It takes resilience to handle the daily challenges. It takes empathy to see the human behind the offense. And it takes open commitment to believe that people can grow, that they can in fact change and learn to live a successful life with the right guidance and with the right support. Today, we pause to acknowledge the countless ways our officers go above and beyond every day, whether it's staying late to help someone find housing, partnering with law enforcement to keep our community safe, or simply showing up with the consistency and care that's needed with the right guidance and support. Their work matters, and it does make a world of difference. So to our probation officers and the staff that support the department, thank you. Thank you for showing up. Thank you for standing firm in your values and for being a steady force of good in our community. Your service to the community does not go unnoticed, and today we honor and celebrate you. Thank you.
No, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the Commissioners for the proclamation and for recognizing the great work of our probation officers and our staff. Our probation officers, to echo sort of what Sally said, put themselves in harm's way each and every day. They have very challenging cases. And I would like to take the opportunity to recognize my appreciation for all of their work and for their dedication, not only to Dauphin County, but to the families and juveniles that they serve each and every day. So this really, today, this proclamation is not so much about us here at the table as much as it is. It's about all the people that are in the back. So, thank you very much.
And for the record, Chris Hagel from-
I'm sorry, yes, Chris Hagel from Dauphin County Juvenile Probation. I'm sorry.
Nicole?
I'm not sure that there's a whole lot more to add. I do just want to express my sincere appreciation for your support, the court's leadership. When we talk about kids, slightly different dynamic, talking about undeveloped brains, a lot of hormones and emotions, and our staff are brilliant at working, rolling up their sleeves, and really valuing what kids have to offer to our communities. I can't thank all of our staff for their, enough for their unwavering dedication. You won't find a better group of probation officers and professional staff that go above and beyond each and every day to make sure that kids that make a mistake still have the same opportunities and are still just as deserving as every other youth in our community to be successful and live their dreams. And so again, we thank you for your support, our court's leadership, and we are just grateful for the honor and recognition today.
I'm Shannon Gibb. I'm the pre-trial director. I have with me today our Assistant Director, Anna Montgomery, and two of our senior bail staff, Rebecca Salameo and Vance Murray. I couldn't bring them all with me. Somebody had to stay behind and answer the phones. I did want to thank the Commissioners for all of their support through the years. The agency has been around a long time, but we've never faltered in having your backing. And I've appreciated that at all costs because it's really hard for a small nonprofit to maintain the work that we do and a small staff that we do still have the volume that we have. Our bail supervisors assist defendants with any resources that they may need so that they can comply with any bail conditions that the judges have set for them, so then they can successfully complete the bail process without failure to appear and hopefully without rearrest. Our office also helps assist the magistrates and the common pleas judges in the bail setting practice so that gives them a viable alternative to incarceration, which is very important because not every crime requires incarceration and not everybody needs to be in jail. So through the work of our pre-trial staff, which I couldn't do it without them, I want to thank you and my staff, and just thank you for recognizing us as part of this process.
And Shannon, I think we'd all agree that your department may be small, but it's mighty and has a huge impact on county services. At this time, I'm going to ask my colleagues to ask any questions or make some comments before we formally present the proclamation. Commissioners?
The only thing, I think Commissioner Hartwick and I both, as y'all were coming up, wanted to say, I know we had heard of a lifesaving effort from two of our probation officers. And I think that'd be a really good story to maybe share in whatever details is allowable in this context.
Yes, that officer is actually on a well-deserved vacation this week. However, I would be asking the Board of Commissioners to recognize him officially at a later time.
Proudly. Definitely.
Can you express a little bit about that situation or what took place to the extent that you're able or capable?
Sure, I certainly can. We had two officers that were working in the city last week, and they heard shots fired. They were the first two officers to be on the scene. And one of the officers performed what I believe is lifesaving efforts on a thirteen-year-old boy. And we believe that it was due to his efforts in treating the gunshot wound until EMS was able to get there. That was a life or death impact on that juvenile. Yeah, pretty awesome.
That's amazing. I just want to say thank you all for your leadership. Obviously, the leadership doesn't stop with you. There's people all throughout your department leading and aiding the community and serving the community. And we're just grateful to have you here with us today to be able to celebrate all the work that your department does. So thank you for your service to the county.
Try to keep this brief. I'll take it from left to right. Shannon, we've spent so much time together in CJAB, attempting to come up with bail reform, risk assessments, the ability to try to do significant diversion that has paid off significantly. I think we are down in population about five hundred since the beginning of our work to be able to do significant diversion work within Dauphin County. And the work you do and the investment that's made in your nonprofit is far less in comparison to what we pay in system costs absent your ability to do a good job. So quite frankly, it's an investment, not necessarily an expense that continues to pay dividends related to our system. So I want to thank you and your staff for your continued pressing and diligence in order to try to find ways and validated ways to work with both magistrate or district judge level and the courts to ensure that those folks who are a threat to the community who have a violence risk or a flight risk are some of the only people that we detain, not folks who have the inability to pay. So I know we always have work to do, but I think you deserve a lot of credit in that regard. And for juvenile probation, I believe you've been statewide leaders in attempting to reduce from a sort of a formal system. When I started here, we had about four hundred kids in formal placement. I know Randy's sitting back there. She was a probation officer during that time. And now we are one of the leaders in finding evidence-based ways to both do assessments, to match people up with the level of risks, and the level of programming that is going to not further put them into a system where they become a farm team for the adult system. And I want to thank you for all of your innovation and efforts in that regard from the time that we did the Annie Casey Foundation to our current day issues with probation. And then finally, Sally- And then finally, Sally, welcome, you're a great addition. I mean, both your state experience and your local county experience. We're looking forward to sort of that high level of innovation and understanding about the best practices and how we can help support your department. We know you have some incredible employees that are heroes, but how we can support your department in being leaders in probation services. We know that those kind of investments pay dividends for our community, and the safety of our officers is certainly paramount. Thank you.
Dolphin State, our 911 department takes the calls, and their calm, cool voice at the other end when folks are having some of their most traumatic experiences. But you're tied into pretty much every one of those calls. They took in 420,000 calls last year and put out 320,000 calls for assistance, 250,000 for police, 50,000 for EMS, and 20,000 for fire. And you are part of most every one of those calls. So thank you for the great work that you do. And at this time, I'd like to present this proclamation into the record, and then we'll get a photo. We, the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners, welcome this opportunity to honor and thank the pretrial, probation, and parole employees for their dedication, perseverance, and care in all they do as we celebrate National Pretrial, Probation, and Parole Supervision Week, whereas these professionals help those who are reentering society feel stable and ready, aiding them in finding solutions to problems and success in living a safe, healthy, and productive life. Whereas pretrial, probation, and parole officers work tirelessly, not only to provide reentrance with an opportunity for reintegration in society, but to ensure that the public's right to safety is honored and upheld. Whereas these officers work in conjunction with local law enforcement, treatment providers, social service agencies, groups, individuals, and a variety of programs to give reentrance the best chance at success. Whereas we take this week to recognize the effort, attentiveness, and diligence of these incredible individuals who help provide reentrance with a second chance while providing the supervision to keep our neighborhoods safe. Therefore, we join the 293,000 residents of Dolphin County in giving our everlasting gratitude to these officers for the work they do and the assistance they provide, as we do hereby proudly proclaim July 28th through August 1st, 2025, as Pretrial, Probation, and Parole Supervision Week in Dolphin County.
Did you two plan the dresses here?
No.
That's it.
I see.
Yep. And thanks.
You should get all the staff. We should take it up here. Even better. Come on. Come on, let's. Come on, let's. Come on, heck, I think you don't want to be dressed.
I can't stand there. No, sir. No, many fifteen.
Can he stand up for a day? Hour. Jesse, you're going to direct. Should we want to roll behind?
Let's get two rows in the front.
Should we get a row on the top or no?
Hour. Get two rows here, and then three of us. If we could see the C's, if not.
I'm going to...
Is this going to be like one of those trophies and you pass around? What do you guys?
I'm going to fight you.
Did you say, closer? Mike, did you say us up top?
Whoever else wants to get anybody up top. Who cares? Put a couple more people up top standing in front of me. Two here.
I might have to get on the chair. I can't go see him here.
Get everybody in there. Where do you prefer? Right in the middle. We're on this. How's my hair? Good? Never gets old. You're not going to see the seal, but it's okay.
Everyone, let's do...
All right. Is it too early to say better luck next year? Jesse's got Cleveland Browns.
Okay. All right. We'll now move on to our Salary Board. Ms. Roschinsky.
The Salary Board and Personnel Packet had some revisions which were communicated with the board, so it's ready for your approval.
Do we have a motion for the Personnel Packet?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Priest. Second by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion?
Yes, are all of these within the enclosed packet within the 2025 budget numbers?
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Cassie. Next up, we have Victoria Warren. Budget and Finance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So there are no changes to the investment report that was passed out yesterday, and there are also no changes to the purchase order packet, so it's ready for your vote approval.
I have a motion for the purchase order packet.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest. Second by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. There are several items on the agenda requiring Board action today. We've got three satisfaction pieces, one court order tax stipulation, extension letters relating to the area agency on aging, a change order for the Fishing Creek Streambank stabilization project, three repository bids, a one-year contract to allow for the continuation of law enforcement data sharing through COBernet, one affordable housing trust fund request, an MOU with Constellation Energy in which they'll pay for the required radiological emergency planner position we recently established, three Parks and Rec community fund agreements, one food services agreement at the prison, two appointments of Commissioner Hartwick to boards and authorities consistent with recent changes in oversights, one Dolphin County Gaming Advisory Board appointment, approval of the 2025 Annual Action Plan for Housing, ratification of an election integrity grant we received, selection of a prison healthcare services provider to enter into negotiations with, one custody council agreement for the courts, three children and youth agreements, three adoption assistance agreements, five human service agreements, the submission of our Human Services Block Grant Plan, seven MOUs with local schools, and five mental health, autism, and developmental programs agreements. I do also want to note that we received correspondence from the State Budget Secretary yesterday outlining a number of potential impacts to human services funding as a result of the ongoing state budget impasse. And I've circulated that information to department heads, and I'm asking for their expedited review and coordination. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty?
Yes. Just for clarification, the gaming board appointment today will then put us at four of the allotted five members.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Solicitor's Report. Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring Board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office. I am going to call for an executive session on a legal matter at this moment.
At this moment?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion for an executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're adjourned for executive session.
I'd like to call back to order the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, July 30th, 2025. I'd like to hand it over to our Chief Clerk.
I'd like to clarify for the record that on Wednesday, July 30th, an executive session was held to discuss contract negotiations.
Okay. Back to the Solicitor's Report. Anything else to report?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Do we have any questions of the Solicitor?
Yes, as I've done for several weeks in a row now, I'm asking for an update on the Tech Port project.
The Board has been provided with the report from AP Williams. Today is the day to close on that project. I do not believe we are closing. I have not been instructed to close. I've put the closing agent on notice that we are not closing today. If you do not close today, if the county does not close today, the contract is terminated. It is a default. The seller would have to provide a request to the escrow agent to release the deposit.
The deposit being how much?
$400,000. He would then have five days to release. The escrow agent would release him in five days.
I think it's just important for public record to note that we received estimates on the project at over $20 million, or right around $20 million, which would have ballooned the project to over $30 million. And the project was an all-in-one human services center, which I just want to be clear, I'm very much in support of the concept and really want to see it through, really want to find a way to make it work under different circumstances. But the circumstances of the cost, we would be, I think, leveraging millions and millions of dollars. And I think by even leveraging, I would just say overpaying for just a lot of this. And I'm not, that's market value now, but it wasn't market value prior to me becoming a Commissioner when this project was considered and when the numbers were done on what we expected, this worked to come in at. And so, it's disappointing to be at this place, but it's also, I think, the responsibility for the Commissioners to do to not follow through on this, given the balloon and cost.
I think it's, for me, sort of add some comments. We're in a different time with significant uncertainty. I know Eric Haggerty had just mentioned the budget letter that we received yesterday that talks about all human service dollars not being extended to county governments until this budget impasse is over. I was planning on addressing this in my Commissioners' comments, but I guess there's no better time than the President if I have the floor. The federal uncertainty, I think we woke up today reading City and State talking about rural hospitals closing and Medicaid and the uncertainty of the cost shift that is going to happen to local governments. It's also a time where construction costs have doubled and went through the roof. The idea of, you know, making a right decision is never about politics. It's always about attempting to try to figure out the best possible avenue to achieve its goal. And I believe in this case, our goal has always been and will remain to better serve clients, reduce silos, figure out ways to provide a person-centered level of care in a way that is going to provide better outcomes for the folks that we are intending to serve, and a better collaborative work environment for those individuals that work for Dolphin County in a place where they will also have a reason to come to work. Those things are still a primary goal of this Board and something that we will continue to sue, I would continue to pursue. I believe that, you know, there's also a number of other reasons, just quickly. I mean, this building had multiple leases. As a part of our, you know, taking out the bond issue for this, there are leases that would have allowed the timing of our major, especially Children and Youth Department, who comes online in 2027. It was delayed. Instead of the county having carrying costs, there was a revenue source to make sure that wasn't a burden to taxpayers. There's also a close proximity to our jail, public access to a room, and we had an extensive real estate search. But when numbers bear out in a way that they have, you know, a direction that, you know, God's telling us it's not right, it's clear it's not right, I think it's time to take a step back before we take a step forward and, you know, reevaluate real estate options. And, you know, it's $100 million in this environment to build a new building, $100 million. That's not achievable. And construction costs are clearly a major concern. So as things clear up for the federal and state future, as we become more certain, and quite frankly, our Board needs to focus on blocking and tackling and figuring out a way to get a lot of these budget-related issues correct so county taxpayers are not bearing the burden. So we are going to make the appropriate decision today to protect our taxpayers and do this in a way that's going to better serve our clients and our employees. So that's the determination and sort of my comments.
Commissioner Priest, did you have anything to add?
I do. As one Board member losing out on $400,000 does not sit well with me. Two months ago, I joined with Commissioner Hartwick in a two-to-one vote to extend the Tech Port project by 60 days, which gave us an opportunity to, gave us an opportunity to exhaust all avenues to not lose that $400,000. We got numbers back based upon projections from, actually, pre-COVID days for what was needed within that building. Since COVID-19, we've had several departments and agencies in Dolphin County that work from home. I think we could have looked at other ways potentially to not just have a one-stop human services shop there, but I think we can and should in the future look at a larger county presence, potentially a county hub at Tech Port. I look at this building right now, and unless the county Commissioners' offices have to be here by statute, we could potentially look at a satellite office out there for meetings or have the majority of this building move out there. I'm sure the city of Harrisburg would love to have this building back on the tax rolls. I think there were avenues that we didn't explore. The $19 million is prohibitive for that project, but I think we need to, in the future, look at that same area, same location, and potentially explore moving county services out there in a much larger scale.
The original proposal involved a 130,000 square foot addition, which was less of the cost than this projected came in as we finally have looked at. I would be remiss to not recognize a Dolphin County resident who, as a taxpayer, stepped up and did something for free for Dolphin County. They took the initiative and put together without having to...
Yeah, I, I think it's appropriate for me to add some comments. We're in a, a different time, uh, with significant uncertainty. I know, uh, Eric Haggerty had just mentioned the budget, uh, letter that we received yesterday that talks about all human service dollars not being extended to county governments until this budget impasse is over. Um, I, I was planning on addressing this in my commissioner's comments, but I guess there's no better time than the President if I have, I have the floor. The federal uncertainty, I think we woke up today reading city and state talking about rural hospitals closing and Medicaid and the uncertainty of the cost shift to, that is going to happen to, uh, local governments. Uh, it's also a time where construction costs have doubled and went through the roof. Um, the idea of, you know, the, the making a right decision, uh, is never about politics. It's always about attempting to try to figure out the best possible avenue to achieve its goal. And I believe in this case, our goal has always been and will remain to better serve clients, reduce silos, figure out ways to provide a person-centered level of care in a way that is going to provide better outcomes for the folks that we are intending to serve and a better collaborative work environment for those individuals that work for Dolphin County in a place where they will also have a reason to come to work. Um, tho- those things are, are still a primary goal of this board and something that we will continue to sue. I would continue to pursue. Uh, I, I believe that, um, you know, there's also a number of other reasons, just quickly. I mean, this building had multiple leases. As a part of our, you know, taking out the bond issue for this, there are leases that would have allowed the timing of our major, especially children, youth department who comes online in two thousand and twenty-seven. Uh, it was delayed. Instead of the county having carrying costs, there was a revenue source to make sure that wasn't a burden to taxpayers. Uh, there's also a close proximity to our jail, public access to a room, and we had an extensive real estate search. But when numbers bear out in a way that they have, um, you know, a, a direction that, you know, God's telling us this is not right. It's clear it's not right. Um, I think it's time to take a step back before we take a step forward and, uh, you know, reevaluate real estate options. And, you know, it's a hundred million dollars in this environment to build a new building. A hundred million dollars. That's not achievable. Uh, and a construction costs are clearly, uh, a major concern. Um, so as things clear up for, for the federal and state future, as we become more certain and, and quite frankly, our board needs to focus on blocking and tackling and figuring out a way to get a lot of these budget-related issues correct. So county taxpayers are not bearing the burden. So we are going to make the appropriate decision today to protect our taxpayers and do this in a way that's going to better serve our clients and our employees. So, uh, that's the determination and sort of my comments.
Commissioner Priest, did you have anything to add?
I do. Uh, as one board member losing out on four hundred thousand dollars does not sit well with me. Um, two months ago, I joined with Commissioner Hartwick in a two-to-one vote to extend, uh, the Tech Port project by sixty days, which gave us an opportunity to gave us an opportunity to exhaust all avenues to not lose that four hundred thousand dollars. We got numbers back based upon projections from actually pre-COVID days for what was needed within that building. Uh, since COVID-19, we've had several departments and agencies in Dolphin County that work from home. I think we could have looked at other ways potentially to, uh, not just have a one-stop human services shop there, but I think we, we can and should in the future look at a, a larger county presence, potentially a county hub at Tech Port. I look at this building right now and, uh, unless the county commissioner's offices have to be here by statute, we could potentially look at a satellite office out there for meetings or have the majority of this building move out there. I'm sure the city of Harrisburg would love to have this building back on the tax rolls. Um, I think there, I think there were avenues that we didn't explore. Uh, the nineteen million dollars is prohibitive for that project, but I think we need to, in the future, look at that same area, same location, and potentially explore moving county services out there in a much larger scale.
Uh, the, the original proposal involved a, the third, a hundred and thirty thousand square foot addition, which was less of the cost than this projected came into, came in, uh, a- as we finally have looked at. I, I, I would, I would be remiss to not recognize a Dolphin County resident, uh, who, yeah, as a taxpayer stepped up and did something uh, for free for Dolphin County. They took the initiative and put together, uh, without having to take any board action to their own expense, uh, the ability to put together a critically important and valued document that had provided a significant amount of most current information and, um, uh, provided sort of the, the guidelines. Now, obviously in these reports, there are always things you can debate about additional costs, uh, but it became clear as, as we examined the report, uh, that in the current environment, I, I, I want to thank AP Williams, but I also, uh, we, we need to move in a direction that allows us to regroup, rethink and ensure that we set this thing up for success. And that's what we are committed to doing.
I just like that. One more thing. Mr. Williams did advise us that of the nineteen million dollars, not all of that needed to be done upfront. It could have been done, uh, in, in a cyclical manner over multiple years. Thank you.
Uh, and i- if I may, uh, I know I don't usually do this, but I, I do want to commend the board. I, I think, um, these are really hard decisions that you all have to make and I think one of the hallmarks of leadership is the ability to change your mind based on new information and, um, of course, it's never fun to have to, you know, walk away from a deposit like this, but throwing, you know, good money after bad, if the numbers don't make sense anymore is the right, you know, financial decision, I think, that you're making on behalf of taxpayers. And as you've mentioned, you know, we certainly on your behalf will remain committed to, um, doing everything we can to find and, and alternative options for you to consider for this consolidated human services project.
I will respectfully disagree with your comment that the board will be making the best decision on behalf of taxpayers.
Fair.
Any other questions from Mr. Owens or comments on Tech Port? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Owens. Uh, we'll move on to matters requiring board action. Do we have any items that need to be pulled out for a separate vote? I'm pulling out number twenty-three and number thirty-eight. Do any others need pulled?
I need to pull that up. Twenty.
Twenty? So currently I have items twenty, twenty-three and thirty-eight pulled out for separate vote. Are there any others that need to be pulled out or can we make a motion for the remaining items?
I'll make a motion on items one through forty-nine minus the three mentioned.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Priest for items one through forty-nine without number twenty, number twenty-three and number thirty-eight, and it is seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, we'll start with item twenty. Uh, appointment of Smitty Brown. East hand over to Dolphin County Gaming Advisory Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest. Do we have a second? All second, seconded by myself, Commissioner Douglas. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Uh, item number twenty-three, selection of Dolphin County prison healthcare service provider. I'll make a motion for the selection of Medico. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion?
Uh, I, I think it's appropriate now to talk about at least a process. I mean, I know Ms. Parsons mentioned, uh, the idea of transparency in a process. Uh, it's something that I attempted to try to keep us updated on and certainly, um, will, uh, try to expound on it a little bit today as it relates to both scoring, uh, and, and how we arrived, how I arrived at a decision that involved, you know, direct interviews with each one of the potential healthcare providers. So, um, the, the first thing I said, I, I, I've learned a lot. I learned a great deal related to, um, both strengths and weaknesses of, of the various companies. I think it would be great to be able to pull together an all-star team from what I saw. Um, but the idea that each company had certain, you know, values and, and, and strengths versus others was, um, noted within, uh, the actual interview process. Um, I did a little bit of research, just so you know, related to the process, uh, on healthcare RFPs, uh, and did a lot of work on, um, you know, uh, artificial intelligence to be able to talk about a rubric, to talk about trying to define, because based upon the actual, um, initial interviews that were occurring, uh, there was not really a scoring system that was developed around, uh, how we would be able to evaluate these particular, uh, healthcare providers. Um, the, we, we narrowed, narrowed it down to, uh, several questions and, and weighted those questions. Uh, the questions included general company background, staffing and personnel, which is critical, medical care services, mental health services, substance use disorder treatment, dental and vision services, pharmaceutical services, electronic medical records, which plays a critical role in any kind of transition, uh, quality assurance and compliance, legal and risk management and transition and implementation, which, uh, sounds like it's even more of a critical component. Out of that scoring system, it was weighted, um, based upon, you know, what, what, you need to have staffing and personnel. This is staffing and personnel-driven organization. Uh, medical care services are the primary source within the business. Obviously, this is the largest mental health provider. We've talked about all of those, uh, specific public issues. Um, and, uh, based upon the interviews that we provided, uh, I, we, I actually waited until yesterday to compile the scores because I did not want any influence, any engagement related to how that occurred. And I will tell you, uh, at least from the interview stage, I think any one of the four companies would serve Dolphin County well. Uh, I know we've had five companies that had participated. I know at least for my particular interviews, there was one company, Armor, that did not agree to do, uh, a level of participation related to interviews. So out of the four companies that, that were interviewed, uh, we had developed a scoring system and, uh, we have achieved, uh, what I believe is a fair process, uh, one that provided outcomes that I did not know the determining factor to, until yesterday. And, um, those individuals were ranked, uh, Prime Care Medical, uh, Well Path, uh, Medico and Yes Care as it related to, uh, how they, how they had ranked based upon that scoring system. So again, I, there is also what we had related to a scoring system, but, you know, I also hear what the public is saying, you know, there-
And I just want to make, you've used the word "we" multiple times. You're referencing your scoring system. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make that clear.
I should say, I, I have heard from the public about their concerns and related to those issues that have plagued Dolphin County. Uh, so obviously those things weigh into consideration that are not a part of the rubric. So I wanted to make sure that we had a fair and transparent process, one that interviewed each one of those individual, um, companies and provided a scoring system. I have also asked Vince Pease and, and Eric Haggerty, uh, to join in the conversation just so we had multiple folks and we sort of angled up, did we miss anything? How, in fact, you know, how, how would you take these responses and questions? And it ultimately scored them based upon how they responded to those series of questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. Uh, can, can I ask, uh, our solicitor a couple of questions? When does our pri- our, our prime care contract end currently? We're in an extension right now.
Through the end of August.
Uh, have we requested, uh, an, an extension?
Yes.
Have we been provided an extension?
No.
Okay. Uh, the urgency unfortunately with this particular matter is that, um, we have not been offered an extension and therefore every single day is a day we're losing to, uh, transition onboard, uh, a, a new provider. Uh, if that's the direction the board chooses to go and for that, um, we, we've had to operate with a sense of urgency. Back many months ago, as I was, um, on the team reviewing those who, uh, applied, I sat in a full day of applications and got to hear from, from all of the providers as well, as well as, you know, binders and binders full of their RFPs. Um, we've had, you know, a lot of time to go over this. I think we're at a point now where, uh, any day that we go beyond now, knowing that there is not an extension being offered, um, is negligent. Uh, we have to make sure to give the provider plenty of time to onboard. Did you have anything to add?
I did. An ex- an extension, uh, was floated by the provider with unacceptable terms, just to be clear. So-
With unacceptable terms, uh, do you care to comment what those unacceptable terms were?
I would prefer not to at this point, but I, oh, I, I answered your question, no, it, which is true, under acceptable terms.
Sure. Fair.
But I also mentioned that as a part of this evaluation, there was a, a significant way talking about transportation, or tran- transition and implementation. Um, obviously, uh, anybody who's going to transition, there was not one provider that responded, they could do it in less than sixty days. Um, so one said forty-five, but that would be stretching them to the limit and we are now faced with a thirty-day potential transition.
Yep. Commissioner Priest, did you have anything else to add?
Yes, if I may. I am not a healthcare professional. I'll readily admit that. Uh, none of our commissioners sitting here are healthcare professionals. Nor did I utilize artificial intelligence to come up with a matrix to make a decision. Uh, what I did utilize was the RFP process that was presented to the board of prison inspectors. Uh, I reviewed that and analyzed that and that is an analysis done by a professional with twenty-plus years of experience in the field. And I'm going to, as one commissioner, uh, follow the consultant's recommendation for the company that was brought forth and recommended as the number one overall pick.
Any further discussion on this matter? We have a motion on the floor for the selection of Medico for Dolphin County prison healthcare service provider. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Finally, we have item thirty-eight before us. Um, memorandum of understanding between Dolphin County and Dolphin County Technical School. This memorandum outlines the services the county will deliver to the district and its students with drug, alcohol and tobacco problems, as well as, uh, the assistance the district will provide to accomplish su- such ends. There's no exchange of funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? I will be abstaining as my son attends the school and I want to avoid any appearance of conflict. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Motion carries. Former business? There's none. Any new business? Hearing none. Commissioners, discussion and actions will begin with Commissioner Hartwick.
You know, I usually don't like to say anything that's negative. Um, I, I know I am not a professional healthcare consultant, but I did start out this process by interviewing and starting with the person that was hired to do this, uh, as a professional consultant and asked a couple of directed and specific questions. What questions did you ask? What rubric did you use? How were the questions all similar? How were you guided? Um, you know, what were, what was your basis by which you made that, those decisions? And it was pretty clear that there was not, besides, again, in, in her opinion about companies that she might have known or not known on the national level and the interview process, she had made a series of recommendations. Uh, obviously from my perspective, um, you know, I, I, I think this is a really guiding, good opportunity for us to talk about how as we run, run through an RFP process. And again, I don't, I, I think we should spend a little bit of time related to education, ensuring that we have a level of transparency, as, as Pam had talked about, a scoring system in which can be validated and one that can be based upon, you know, both the reason and ration that can be justified in a public fashion related to where folks score. Without a, a, an evaluation and a score, I, you know, it's hard for me to make those determinations and quite frankly, I will be direct. I left the conversation a bit more distorted than I did clear, clear. So again, from that process not being very clear to me in an interview, uh, I felt it was really important to be able to find something that I could find that was much more quantifiable. And, uh, that's why we went forward in that way. I respect Commissioner Priest's decision. Um, but I ultimately felt that it was my obligation to make that kind of determination and do the due diligence as a commissioner in a way that provided sort of an undistorted level of, uh, outcomes, uh, and, and standardized questions. The, uh, second point I'd like to make today is about, uh, an upcoming visit. Uh, Friday, we are going to, uh, be attempting to, uh, continue to try to work to keep steel in Steelton. Uh, we, uh, I want to thank, uh, Senator Fetterman for his statements earlier this week, who was pretty clear in making a statement that the replacement of steel with data warehouses is unacceptable. Uh, we still have five hundred employees who are out of work. We still have an active steel mill that operates less than twenty percent of the capacity. Uh, we have a CEO from Cleveland Cliffs who continues to get to the table to negotiate, uh, while we have working men and women who have built this country and have built this region, have built things like the Golden Gate Bridge and Toronto Skydome. They're currently in operations to be able to provide the rail to, uh, to the New York rail lines. There are nuclear, or there are submarine parts and the Navy parts that are, that are due. Uh, we need to get our steelworkers back to work. And I think it's one thing that has unified our entire region, elected officials. Uh, we are going to be taking that, uh, to DC in a, a meeting with administration officials with a joint letter, uh, from every elected official in this region, uh, asking for intervention to get Cleveland Cliffs back to the table and to get these steelworkers, uh, who are now, uh, in desperate need of additional help from elected officials and folks to force the kind of investment necessary to get them back to work, to actually stop staying on the sidelines and get back to work. Thank you.
Commissioner Priest?
Yeah, I just want to add, uh, what we saw today was government inaction the way it should be. Uh, today there were no three-zero votes on the difficult agenda items. There were two-to-one votes. Majority wins. I appreciate, uh, where my colleagues are at and I respect where they're at on the Tech Port project. I didn't agree with them moving forward. I respect where Commissioner Hartwick was coming from on the Dolphin County prison healthcare process, which by the way, no matter who we chose today, we're still paying, we're going to pay millions of dollars more per year, no matter who we chose. So we have to now determine how we're paying for that moving forward. The taxpayers are still wincing from last year's twenty-one point eight percent tax increase and now we have billions of more dollars we're going to have to pay out for the healthcare at Dolphin County prison. So we got our work cut out for us. Commissioner Hartwick is now oversight of the budget process here in Dolphin County. Uh, I think he's ready, raring and able to go and, uh, look forward to ideas and solutions that, uh, this board's going to have to come up with. And that's why I even mentioned, uh, this building here, uh, potentially being for sale down the road. We need to start looking outside the box and making decisions that maybe former boards weren't comfortable doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. Um, I, I want to take a moment to, um, to thank all those that were involved in, uh, uh, the DCP medical RFP. Uh, I want to thank the consultant, uh, who provided, uh, time, energy and effort into evaluation. I want to thank, uh, the vendors, all of whom who participated in, uh, you know, uh, worked to communicate with us and, uh, also take interviews. Um, I want to thank, uh, prison staff and also, uh, the board, but certainly the members of the board who were on the, uh, committee to review, uh, and for all their work, including, uh, the chairwoman and all of her work and really kind of spearheading and organizing that. I certainly want to thank the public. Uh, we heard from a lot of constituents and, uh, want to, want to thank them for, for sharing and, um, and I, I'm really hopeful about, uh, quality healthcare for our residents at Dolphin County prison. I also want to thank Commissioner Hartwick for his tenacity for representing Steelton and for, um, the work that his office has done to, uh, gather all the local electeds on a bipartisan effort to keep steel in Steelton. Thank you for your efforts in that and we're hoping that, uh, it will yield success. Uh, this past weekend, I had the great, uh, opportunity to walk in the pride parade, Central Pennsylvania Pride Parade. Uh, I want to say a special thanks to Free Mom Hugs as, uh, they were slated in front of me and they were just like, just join us because that's what Free Mom Hugs does. And, uh, and I got to go and give hugs with them, Free Dad or Bro Hugs and Fist Bumps. And so it was a good time walking through. Uh, I also want to recognize that, uh, Dolphin County was represented there with a, a booth as well. And, uh, I want to thank the LGBTQIA plus committee and volunteers who, uh, ultimately, uh, represented the county in that booth and ensured that like our message of, you know, here's ways you can get involved in the county. Here's our parks or here's, you know, uh, if you're looking for a job, here's a place you can work. If you're looking for a name change, here's where you would do that. We have so many things in the county that people don't even know that, you know, were the interface for, and so the opportunity to educate the public. Uh, last week we helped highlight, uh, a miracle community, a new transitional space created for individuals currently, uh, soon to be leaving Tent City. This initiative offers resources, shelter and above all dignity for our unhoused neighbors. Uh, I want to thank, uh, our human services department, certainly, uh, Randy especially and her leadership. I want to thank the city. I want to thank the Gov's Office and I certainly want to thank a miracle for sure for their tireless work and commitment to supporting this vulnerable population in this critical time. Uh, I also want to recognize our Chief Clerk, uh, Eric Haggerty for, uh, we recently opened, uh, resume submission portal. It's something we had talked about. Um, and I, I think it's actually something, maybe I would just want to give you a quick, like maybe twenty seconds to talk about, just that we have- just that we have a resume portal now for the public, correct? It is up. And I just think this is interesting because maybe you don't know where you fit in Dolphin County. Like maybe you just want to submit your resume and tell us about yourself. And maybe we can look at that resume and say, oh, wow, that really fits this particular job. So you just want to tell about that briefly?
Sure, yeah. At DolphinCounty.gov, folks can click on a link that says employment and see all of the jobs that are posted at any given time. We post, you know, five to 15 new jobs each week and fill them on a rolling basis. But I know most normal folks at home are not constantly refreshing our website. So if people want to submit a resume, we can sort of do the legwork on our end to figure out if and when a job opens up that makes sense. We can proactively reach out in the future to make you aware of job postings. So we're working hard to address some workforce challenges here at the county. We're always looking for talented folks to join the team. So this is just another avenue for people to express interest.
I just want to recognize the Chief Clerk's office and just some of the innovative ways in which they're approaching some of the challenges of the county. Finally, last thing, last night, Russell Dickerson played on the Riverfront for Dolphin County Live Series. That'll be continuing on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday will be a free pride show. Thelma Houston will be there. And Saturday night will be Head in the Heart and Sunday night will be The Marleys and Jay Book. And so really think there's some amazing opportunities to get out, to celebrate. I mean, it's just such a beautiful spot too. Like when you're out there, the only negative thing is the Mayflies or the Nats, you know? But, 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 but the river, the view, great music, great food trucks, just a great opportunity to get out and celebrate summer. And it looks like this weekend's going to have some good weather. So I want to encourage you to get out to one of those concerts. And that's, you know, tourism dollars at work, bringing people to downtown Harrisburg and something that I think this board is proud to support and excited to continue to see the growth of that. Moving on, we have correspondence that will be received and distributed as needed by the Chief Clerk's office. Now we will move on to public participation. Just a reminder, it is a three-minute cap. We are live streaming and you'll need to begin by stating your name. Anyone for public participation? Oh, sorry, I actually have a list. I apologize. Forget that, I always forget that I have a list. We will begin with Pam Parsons.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. In 1990, in the early 1990s, Steve Reed, with the support from the county, tore down all the single-room occupancy hotels in downtown Harrisburg to make way for redevelopment, the Hilton, the Whittaker Center. And at that time, we promised, corporate, all of us, promised that we would replace that. And we created a massive shelter and social service network in the 30-some years since then. And here we are today. We again are faced with a crisis for unhoused people. We failed folks 30 years ago, and I think we're failing them again. I'm glad the county is taking this on and stepping up. While my city that I live in, Harrisburg, has mostly aggregated their responsibility to the unhoused population. And I'm really grateful that a miracle for sure has stepped in where nobody else did. And especially considering that they have such a small staff. But this, like the prime care, like medical providers for the prison, this provided us with a golden opportunity for transparency. And not only that, for creative community problem solving. That included the unhoused because they were not included in the 1990s when all these things were torn down and we created what was initially the Shelter Committee that brings us to now. But we didn't do that. We didn't do that then and we didn't do that now. And there are a number of problems with the site that was chosen. One of those is it's currently zoned industrial. Has the zoning changed? When will be the plan for that? It is in a former steel plant area. Have we identified whether there are heavy metals in the soil there? When I look at Phoenix Steel in other locations, a lot of work after those plants closed had to be done to remediate heavy metals. There's no shade there. I think about that on a day like today. Would I want to be in a tent on a platform in a parking lot on a day like today? No. It's close to railroad tracks. That's noise. That's safety. Do you know what some of those trains carry through there? And people will be in close proximity to that? There's flooding with the Paxton Creek. Have we considered that? Is there an evacuation and disaster plan? This is wholly inappropriate for housing, permanent housing. And it is, just as it is for putting people there temporarily. And I'm sorry, we've missed an opportunity to make a big change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons. Anyone, oh, sorry, forgot my list here. Go off my list. Next up, Kamika Campbell.
Writing furiously as these things are happening, so please excuse any grammatical errors. Kamika Campbell, shy vote once again. Good morning again, Commissioners. This is my second time addressing you today because this moment matters so much. Earlier, I asked you to make a choice that helps, not harms. And now I want to offer my thanks. To Commissioners Douglas and Priest, thank you for your votes in support of Medico. Your decision reflects a commitment to accountability, transparency, and the voices of the people who showed up and spoke out and asked for something better. To Commissioner Hartwick, I want to be clear that I don't believe anyone on this board made an uninformed decision. I trust that each of you acted based on the information you had and the values that you hold. And I respect that. And I hope this remains a moment where public dialogue deepens, even when perspectives differ. This vote wasn't just about selecting a contractor. It's about whether the public could trust this process and whether the lives of those incarcerated at DCP would be treated with dignity and care. Thank you for listening and thank you for showing that change is possible when the community and leadership come together. And this is only the beginning. I am happy that we are considering these lives. I also want to say I agree with everything Pam said. That two years ago, I believe we participated in the, two summers ago, actually. No, it was two winters ago. We have participated in the relocation of the unhoused population from under the Mulberry Street Bridge. And it was going close to basically where they're going to kind of be now with this new project with a miracle for sure. And the flooding, the environmental factors, the lack of shade, the other problems that were there prohibited the folks that we had literally located there from being there long-term. So whatever this project is, nobody's really sure what it is yet. I'm hoping that we take the lives of our unhoused population in the same way that we're advocating for every part of the county and every resident there into very careful consideration. Because I also know in 20 years that that, whatever happens with that property, it doesn't have to be low-income housing anymore. And 20, 20 years seems like a long ways away, but it's really not. What it took us like, I don't know, several years to figure out what to do with the unhoused population under the Mulberry Street Bridge. And then that all fell apart because they're not even over by the Shinoi Street location anymore to where they were relocated. So I'm just hoping that whatever the plan is, that it will be transparent. That's number one. Transparency is the word of the day. But also that the county will allow the public to be involved in that process. So we make the best, not just a miracle for sure, but all the people who care. So we can make the best possible decisions for our unhoused population that will be there. Thank you.
Campbell, that exhausted my list of those who signed up early. But if there is anyone else for public comment, now's the time.
Morning. Hi, Winnie O'Callough, nonprofit owner and community advocate, Harrisburg, City of Harrisburg. My comments, what I would like to start with is I'd like to thank you for your consideration of all the folks who had requested to take on the healthcare contract and for actually considering and selecting Medico. Because hearing that comment about any of the applicants would have been an equally okay decision, I would strongly disagree with that because in as much as perhaps technically on paper, they may seem equally qualified. We have already seen one that's been utterly reprehensible in their care to the folks who are already existing at DCP and that has been prime care. So I have no problem saying that in front of you all because we have seen their track record thus far. Whether it's deaths that are attributable to Dolphin County Prison or just the complaints that we are hearing left, right, and center for folks who have been incarcerated at a facility and have left or are communicating to community advocates and their loved ones out here to ask for things as simple as access to portable drinking water, clean indoor air qualities, healthy food, because as you know, that's connected to our mental health situations. And all of you have advocated for better mental health care services, given that DCP sadly is the primary caregiver for mental health services in this county. It's sad that that is the place that we have misplaced our priorities to be the mental health support. It shouldn't be so. Folks should not have to be incarcerated to receive effective and caring and quality mental health support or housing even, right? Because we are also seeing an increased criminalization of being unhoused. And let's be honest, as much as we talk about affordable housing, the issue when it comes to people having access to shelter in this county, it shouldn't just be about affordable housing. It's about housing affordability because all of us are one horrible medical incident away from probably being in that situation. So as we come to advocate for them, we are also advocating for one another and ourselves, regardless of how much money you make, how much, what you earn today, right? It's not just about affordable housing because there are people who make more than the affordable housing, right? The requirement, but are still struggling heavily and they could end up on that situation. So it's not just about affordable housing. It's about housing affordability in the city to ensure that everyone who wants or desires to have shelter and food and access to the basic bare minimum to live a decent life in the city and to be able to maintain, you know, employment because we talk about economic development. How can you go and do that when you don't have a place to stay, when you don't have a mailbox and so on and so forth? So one, thank you for putting forth Medico. Two, you know, continue to do the work when it comes to housing affordability. And yeah, we will keep doing the work. Thank you, team.
Thank you, Winnie. Anyone else for public comment?
Good morning, how you doing? I'm Robert Gross, I'm a citizen of Harrisburg. Okay, I'm talking about my father, Lawrence Thomas Seguro. He was in the Vietnam War, okay? He took six bullets, one in his knee and five in his stomach. He's been incarcerated for six years now. And the operation on his knee has not been done yet. That's prime care, which you're eliminating getting somebody new. Right now, it's an emergency situation. The doctor approved to have his knee replaced. I mean, I don't know if you guys can afford it, if that's the problem. But the problem is, is that the knee needs to be replaced. It's the last straw right now. He's going to lose his leg. Okay, there's 13 children that are going crazy about Poppy. Something needs to be done. I called the warden just recently today and they're trying to stretch it out to where he has his court gate first on August 25th. He needs it done now. It's just the way it is. In medicine, you have to take care of something when it's time to do it. You don't stall and put it off. For an individual who's suffering in a cell like that and doing, I do the best I can with the warden. He does the best he can. But I mean, it's ridiculous that he can't get his knee done. He's a veteran and he needs his knee replaced. It's the bottom line. It's the last straw. He is going to lose his leg. It needs to be replaced. I don't know if it's going to come out of his insurance. Are you going to do it that way? If you guys can make arrangements, I mean, we could do that. Can you give me some feedback on what you would possibly do?
Mr. Gross, today I spoke to the warden. We spoke in the hallway, private meeting. I spoke to the warden following that.
I mean, it's.
We're continuing to monitor your father. I can speak offline about some of the things, but certainly want to give it attention and help in any way I can.
Yeah, it's severe. It really does need to be taken care of. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for advocating for your father. Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, all entertaining motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest. Do you have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. All in favor?
Aye.